Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, February 28, 2022. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Metropolis?
Here.
Mr. Kleiman?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Present. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with our public hearing for the conditional use permit request for outside storage in an I-2 limited industrial district. If the applicant could please come forward, name, address, and presentation for what you're looking for, and this is for the members of the community that you're presenting for this evening.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Robert Zimmerman. I'm here on behalf of RUT Equipment, and we are the applicant for the conditional use permit for outside storage. I have to say something, and as mayor of full disclosure, I spent 16 years as a city councilman in Shaker Heights. Our council meeting going on right now, I was waiting for my name to be called, it wasn't called, and I was also eight years as the council representative to the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, so if I end up voting, that'll be why. Probably not appropriate, but I could see it happening. Anyway, I just want to say that our client is very excited to be relocating to the community. It's kind of an old, I shouldn't say old, it's an established mining equipment and general construction equipment, sales and service company with locations all around the country, but mostly focused in the Midwest and slightly into the Appalachian regions. We're just very, very pleased to be here, want to really compliment the Planning Commission staff, who has been terrific to work with, very responsive. And the reason why we're here tonight, of course, as you know, you've seen the materials in the application, is for the conditional use permit for outside storage, and this is just simply a matter of we need some extra space outside to store some of our equipment, and, you know, sort of a good problem to have, that business is good, and we just need some extra space in order to kind of stage this for storage. And the report, I believe, is very, very complete, though. We will have ample parking even after taking over some of these parking spaces for the outdoor storage. We did see a reference that there was a little bit of concern about being one short on ADA compliant handicap accessible spaces, we will take care of that. Looks like the screening and buffering in terms of the general area is otherwise taken care of. I actually took a little drive over there on my way over this evening, and we intend to be good stewards of the community, good business citizen, and we believe, as set forth in the application materials, that we comply with the requirements for the conditional use.
All right, thank you. It's opportunity for members of the community to come forward and speak either for or against or make comment on this application. If anybody would like to come forward, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we're going to roll into the work session, which the first item on the work session is the conditional use permit request. Mr. Zimmerman, is there anything else on this that you'd like to share with Planning Commission before we see if anybody has any questions for you?
Nothing further, thank you.
David?
Nothing.
Steve?
I have nothing.
Pete?
What are you going to be storing outside?
Oh, just some additional equipment and associated material.
No hazmat stuff?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Craig?
I guess that wooded lot is pretty wooded, that there's no visual between the residential site, that there's no...
Shouldn't be an issue.
You hear that? Okay, that's my only concern.
Thanks.
Scott, anything?
Nothing.
Lynn, anything else that the Planning Commission should be aware of regarding this application?
I would just say that that wooded area is pretty dense, and it also slopes down towards the memory care facility pretty significantly, but you can't see it.
Yeah.
And Mr. Metropolis, also, the applicant has filed for the business registration and zoning compliance, and through that application, there's a disclosure in terms of what will be stored in the building and outside of the building.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. If you'll have a seat, we'll get back to you in the regular meeting portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you so much.
Second item on the work session is site plan request for Pet Suites 8275 Darrow Road. The applicant could please come forward, name, and address, and overview of what you're looking for this evening.
Thank you, thanks for having me back. Matt Nolan, Bundle Hill Development, the owner and developer of the Pet Suites facility, 3000G Henkel Drive, Lebanon, Ohio, 45036. As everything that we've submitted shows, this will be a Pet Suites, high-end pet resort right on Darrow Road, on the front part of the property. We've done our best to set it on the property where there is some wetlands on the property. The way it's laid out avoids the wetlands completely, and we've also worked with the neighboring property owner to improve the curb cut that's there, which will be the only entrance to and from the property, which helps with the engineers' concerns, and our concerns frankly, on making sure that there's the best ingress and egress out of the property, and plenty of buffering along the back to where the facility, the senior facilities are. We don't plan to develop that back of the property, so there'll be two acres of land in between us and them. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So you're aware there are still a few outstanding items that I know you're working on, and they'll be part of conditions if there's an approval tonight. Final engineering approval, approval of the SWP-3 by Summit Soil and Water, approval of the Stormwater Management Facilities Long-Term Maintenance Agreement, and approval of the Mosswood Lane Access Easement by the city engineer and attorney. So I know you're working on those, and those will be needed before you'll be able to move forward. David?
None.
Steve?
I'm good, thank you.
Pete?
Yes, I'm going to make one thing clear. We're going to have two accesses to this property, one off of Darrow and one off of Mosswood, or just one off of Mosswood?
Just one off of Mosswood. Yeah, the Darrow exit onto Mosswood will be our entrance.
Okay, thank you much, that's all I have.
Craig?
I have no question.
Scott?
I have nothing for me, thank you.
Lynn, anything else that we should be aware of?
A well was brought in, requested by engineering, was added to your revisions, along with the fire department connection, and then the widening of the Mosswood access, so that's everything that we expected to have in terms of the revision.
All right, thank you. If you'll have a seat, we'll get back to you in the regular objective portion of this evening's meeting. Thank you. Third item is site plan review for the building addition for Moldright Plastics, 2222 Highland Road. The applicant could please come forward, name and address, and an overview of what you're looking for this evening.
Charles Marshall, Beacon Marshall Companies, Brian Lapikis, Senior Project Manager for Moldright. Moldright was Weathercamp, now it's Moldright. See, anyone that was on the board back at Weathercamp during additions. This is probably our fourth project with this company, and it is in addition to their manufacturing building, the one on the right. What's the address of it?
2222 Highland.
2222, where their offices are, 2200 on the left. It's in the back, the southern portion, it's going to be the same type, like-kind material usage. Lynn brought up a few things, SWP plan revisions to tie into the existing detention basin with our new detention basin, I don't think that's completed yet, the review, a lot of calculations, I can't figure them out, but they'll get it right. And a couple other issues with lighting on the outside, I guess we neglected to show wall pack lighting around the exterior of this building and on 2200 because there was a comment from the fire department wanting a T-drive right between the two buildings, able to back his trucks up, and a new hydrant 300-foot back off of the road to this building. We concur with both those comments from the fire department, and we'll add the lighting. Lynn, I don't know if there's anything I missed or not.
That's everything.
All right.
Yeah, the revised drawings that we received had the T in the back and the hydrant, and it addressed most of those issues that were just mentioned. As you said, there's still a few outstanding items that you're working on, which will be conditions if there's an approval this evening, final engineering approval, the SWP-3 by Summit Soil and Water, approval of the Stormwater Management Facilities revised long-term maintenance agreement...
Revised, maintenance plan, yeah.
...because of the new addition, and as you mentioned, the site lighting plan, which will need to be reviewed and approved by the city planner. Okay. David, comments or questions?
Nope.
Steve?
No, I have to see the expansion.
Pete?
Yes, I looked at the site, and how is this addition going to affect the truck docks?
None.
None.
This is behind, the truck docks are on the north side of the building.
Okay, so you're going to be on the south side.
This addition's on the south side of the building, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Craig?
And I guess it sounds like the parking spaces, you have ample amount even with the addition of employees for this space?
We do at this time, yes. If they continue to grow at the speed they are, they're going to have to look at asphalt in between the two buildings for additional parking, but they have this space, they have this space.
Scott, anything on this?
No.
Looks good, thanks.
Thank you.
Lynn, anything else that...
Just that we did get through the calculations, and they were approved, and then with the addition of the fire access drive and the turnaround, well then...
More hard surface.
More calculations, yeah, so those have been submitted.
Are any of you engineers?
Architects.
Oh, then I won't take a shot at engineers, okay, I'll say away. I think they're just charging me more and more with new calculations.
I hear that all the time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you here shortly. It's 7:15, we'll roll right into the regular meeting agenda. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the January 24, 2022 meeting. Are there any comments or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, those will be accepted as submitted. Public participation, opportunity for members of the community to address Planning Commission. If you signed up and you'd like to speak this evening, name and address, and what you're here for.
All right, thank you. My name's Lynn Clark. I live on Old Mill Road at 2485, and that is immediately down gradient and downstream of two or possibly three developments by Skanel on Old Mill Road. And I've got just a couple of observations to make, I think I've addressed this august body before, and it's just a reiteration of the same thing. In the city of Twinsburg's codified ordinance 1181, it says, and I'm delighted to see this, right, that plans for development of commercial property, industrial property adjacent to residential property will be done in such a manner as to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. And it goes on to say that the values of the property adjacent to the site will be safeguarded, and that harmonious relationships will be in place. Again, we've got a lot of residential properties proximate to this site. So just a couple of comments, and I could submit the full detail, but I'm not going to bore you with all that. Relative to public health, number one thing is groundwater. We rely, everybody on that street relies on individual water wells for their household consumption, and we've always had plenty of water, and it's been, as far as I know, supplying good, safe drinking water to everybody on that street. Now, just looking at the one development, it used to be called Summit 2, Summit Commerce Number 2, I think they've now switched the name to Gumbo, and relative to that, it's about 30 acres, and I did some rough calculations, if it's developed like the last plan showed, which is about 90% of the property having an impermeable surface over it, it's going to reduce the groundwater recharge by a nominal 20 million gallons a year. Now, just not knowing anything else, that's a lot of water, and we don't need near 20 million gallons, but that needs to be really, truly studied before we go any further. Relative to safety of the community, we see that they have multiple access roads for these properties along Old Mill. Old Mill has a shoulder about a foot and a half wide. Having additional truck traffic on there is going to create all sorts of additional congestion on that roadway. We also have some sections of the roadway with a very short site distance. When my neighbor, Mrs. Rice, crosses Old Mill to get her mail every day, she has about 100 yards where she can see oncoming traffic going eastbound down Old Mill Road, and oh yeah, on the township side of the road, right, they travel at a posted 45 miles an hour, which means, you know, they're typically a lot faster. Even on my side of the road, going out to my mailbox, sometimes people go on eastbound, even though I live on the north side of the street, they still are over pushing us into the weeds. So, safety is a huge thing. Relative to the property values, now, there's one person in particular that has a house that's surrounded by this project, Gumbo, the 33-acre site. Three sides, they've clear cut right up to the property line. They also exhibited flooding in their front yard due to the deforestation last year, and that coincides with the next point on safety. So the safe drinking water is going to be compromised by flooding around the well casing, and there are septic systems out in the front yard, and the septic systems are not meant to be under a pond, you know, that causes an additional issue. I don't know how anybody could look at that property and say it's got remotely the same property value now that it did before, much less when they put up whatever kind of development they're going to put up back there. Harmonious relationships, and I think this is really interesting now, right? They've had terrible conditions on their stormwater runoff permit, which says there will be a silt fence around this property, it will be maintained, it will be inspected by the good folks down at the county, acting on the behalf of the city, and by a representative of the builder. Now, I've been out there walking around the property, because part of it butts up very close to mine, and the silt fences have holes in it like this, and have had for months. Now, it doesn't take much effort to go and see that, and all of a sudden now, oh, we want to do something else, and they say, oh, jeez, those fences are magically going to get repaired, or have been repaired already in the last day or two. That is not a good way to start a relationship. And then kind of the last thing, city has a sustainability goal, a sustainability concept. I mean, just the idea of, let's go in and cut down 30 acres of trees, and we don't even know, or we haven't proposed, what we want to build yet. And then, oh, well, we might plant an oak tree here or there, just is seemingly out of sequence. So I will send the more official copy to Ms. Mooter, and hopefully she'll provide it to all of you. Thank you for your time and indulging me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Just so you know, there is nothing on the agenda specifically this evening for this project. I know it's just over the horizon, and I appreciate you letting me bend your ear for a couple minutes, just to begin. I'm real concerned how this body will make sure that ordinance is followed. I think if that's followed, everything will be fine. Thank you. Anybody else from the community, opportunity to come forward and address Planning Commission? Seeing none. Next, item three, the conditional use permit request for outside storage, 2451 East Enterprise Drive. If the applicant can please come back up to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission this evening regarding your request?
No, thank you.
Anything, David?
No.
Steve?
I'm good, thank you.
Pete?
I'm fine, thank you.
Craig?
No.
I'd like to make the following motion, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative, along with the submitted conditional use request and application for RUT Equipment, 2451 East Enterprise Parkway, date stamped received January 18, 2022. I move that Planning Commission recommend to city council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow outdoor storage in the I-2 limited industrial district. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by David, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
5-0, this is a recommendation to city council, they'll now review, and they'll move on a final decision based on the recommendation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members of the convention, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the regular meeting agenda is the site plan for Pet Suites 8275 Darrow Road. Mr. Nolan?
Thank you.
Welcome back. Anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission this evening regarding your application?
No, just to note that the conditions that were discussed are in progress and will be completed quickly.
Thank you. David?
Nothing.
Steve?
I think you have a good summary of the conditions, it will be added to the motion.
I have no further, nothing further.
Lynn? I'd like to make the following motion, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representatives, along with the submitted site plans and landscape plan for Pet Suites 8275 Darrow Road, permanent parcel number 64-09333, date stamped received February 8, 2022, and February 22, 2022. I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions. One, final engineering approval by the city engineer. Two, final approval of the SWP-3 by Summit Soil and Water. Number three, approval of the Stormwater Management Facilities Long-Term Maintenance Agreement by the city engineer. And four, approval of the Mosswood Lane Access Easement by the city engineer and attorney. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Craig, discussion. Roll.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Final site plan approval, 5-0.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the regular meeting agenda is the site plan approval for the building addition for Moldright Plastics, 2222 Highland Road. The applicant could please come forward. Mr. Marshall, anything else that you'd like to share?
Nonetheless, the board would like to see a sample of the model. Perhaps it's there, I brought it, because I had a leftover from the last job.
Well, thank you for making that offer, we'll see if you go down the line of what anybody thinks. David?
I'm good.
Steve?
No, I think you're track history with the additions you've done, and you've shown to be a good steward of site and complying with our zoning and our ability to progress. So I'm happy to see you guys expanding. Good job.
Pete?
I have nothing further.
Craig?
No.
Engineer, I was worried.
I'd like to make the following motion, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representatives, along with the submitted site plans for Moldright Plastics Building Addition, 2222 Highland Road, date stamped received February 8, 2022, and February 22, 2022. I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions. One, final engineering approval by the city engineer. Two, final approval of the SWP-3 by Summit Soil and Water. Number three, approval of the Stormwater Management Facilities Revised Long-Term Maintenance Agreement by the city engineer. And four, final approval of the site lighting plan by the city planner. Second?
I'll second, David.
Second by Steve. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Final site plan approval, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Communications and miscellaneous. David, anything?
Lynn, the one thing we've been talking about for X number of months is that path that goes behind the new development that's there?
Yep.
Was that ever looked at by the developer?
It was looked at by engineering, and now I'm going to have to jog my memory and revisit emails and see where we left it.
Okay.
I seem to recall that it was even worse than you and I originally spoke about.
Yeah, I was back there probably about a month or so ago, and it's pretty bad. Well, there's a lot of erosion that comes down from all the water that's traveling to the stream that's behind it, which you can't really do much about it, but the condition of the grindings that were left behind by the developer is pretty abysmal.
Okay. And you and I had talked about that, but I think in addition to that, there's more poor quality trail happening. I don't know if there was a washout of the covert or something else, I don't...
Probably.
Could be a little rain.
I mean, it is kind of fun to ride that, but, you know, in all fairness to other people, it's not. For me, it's fun, for others, it's not.
I'll, I need to revisit it.
Okay.
I truly do not recall where that was left. It seemed like...
All the houses are done, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, one of the issues is, when the developer did exit the project, it was inspected and found to be a good repair, and so the city doesn't own that trail, the HOA owns it. I think there's going to be perpetual difficulty for the HOA in maintaining it.
It doesn't seem to me to be very complicated if somebody can get a machine and just pulverize that and make it nice and level, and it's just large pieces of asphalt that are back there.
I'll revisit where we left it, though, and get back to you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Steve?
I just had a question. So I noticed Ohio Edison, I'm sure, is trying to set their mesh network up for their smart meters, and we had the micro towers come to us, the Planning Commission, but now we have these like 30, 35-foot poles just popping up around the city, and the one that really just kind of jumps out at me is the one on 91 at Wilcox and Advance Auto, because it's not in the right of way, and that never came to planning. Is that something that should have came to planning?
There was one proposed at that location, and we said, no, you can't do that because it's not in the right of way, but you're telling me it's there.
Oh, it's there, it's hooked up, it's powered up, it's got the antenna on it and everything, yeah.
I mean, I'm wondering if somebody... I mean, I'm wondering if somebody granted them an easement.
Well, it's...
It's on school property?
It looks like it, I'm not sure if it's on Advance Auto's property or on the school property, but it's a good 20 feet off the right-of-way. In fact, when they were finishing it, they had their boom trucks in the parking lot at Advance Auto.
Okay. We did get notice that they wished to install the pole at that location, and they were told, no, you can't do that, it's not in the right-of-way for starters, and we also aren't willing to accept poles at that height. And they said, well, too bad for you, regarding the height, and we said, well, okay, but you're still outside of our right-of-way, so I'm surprised to hear that the pole was in fact installed.
Well, there's one on Highland Road at the Ulta facility that's in the right-of-way.
That one, we conceded we would live with in the industrial district.
Well, yeah, because the high tension poles that go into there are relatively the same height, and I know, I'm guessing it's part of their mesh network for these smart meters that are installed.
It is, that is exactly what it is.
Yeah, they're popping up and sold, I'm sorry.
You also will be getting new poles at your location on Darrow Road.
Yes, I know, from Etterton all the way up to where the little house used to be, which, since you brought that up, the only, I mean, that's, that's fine that they're going to redo that, that power run, but it doesn't look like they're really moving the pole locations, and if we end up getting grant money to do the expansion and the sidewalk and bike lanes on the roadway, they're going to come back in and fix the new poles and...
Right, we had that conversation with them last week, so we'll see where that leads, that's not final, but that exact assessment was made.
Yeah, they actually never had an easement for the pole on my property, so now we have one. So that's how I knew the project was built. That's all I have.
All right, that's good, thank you. Pete?
I have nothing to add.
Craig?
I have nothing, no.
Scott, anything?
Not this evening, thank you.
Lynn, what's going on? What do we have to look forward to here?
So I think we have a quorum for next Monday, am I correct? In that we can see the quorum for next Monday for the Old Mill project.
Just out of curiosity, is everyone coming?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay.
Great, and so then we'll have the meeting on the 21st. I believe Summit Sound is looking to put a little expansion on to the rear of that building, they would like to be on the agenda if they can get a paper working on, and then I would expect the Old Mill project to come back for that meeting as well, so we'll see.
If anybody's up in Mayfield Village, that's where they moved Amy Joy Donuts, like a round one with a fluffy white cream filling. That could be my going-away present.
A round one with white one?
Yeah, it's really big, it's huge, Amy, it's going to be bad for them.
Voting the show.
Anything else, Lynn?
That is all.
All right, so next Monday, the 7th, back here again. Until then, 7:35 adjournment.